Alright, so how do I?
I'll go click in everything. Six people, okay. Everybody.
Please no. Thank you, everybody.
If they're not highlighted, you don't.
Okay.
Hi.
Reporting in progress.
Alright, alright, got everybody.
Alright, um, let's see here. Do we have, uh?
Do we have, uh, do we have Karen Lewis? She had texted me that she was on.
Yes, I just let her in.
Okay, very good.
Um, and I know Greg was trying to, uh, oh Greg's on, okay, great. Yeah, yeah, I was just about to text you.
I just got on.
I'm gonna mute, uh, but I'm here.
This is Mike Scalise on here as well.
Oh, okay, great, great. Alright, well, it looks like we have a, a strong quorum. Um, uh, so we'll call the meeting to order at, uh, ten twenty-two and, um, uh, just to be fully transparent, uh, I'm, uh, not quite sure how you want to play, how you want to proceed, so, uh, does someone want to take the lead on this?
If I may.
Please, thank you.
Um, the purpose for the meeting is, uh, we still have pending, uh, three permits that we would like the Board of Selectmen to, uh, based on our recommendation, approve or not, um, depending on our vote today, uh, on December nineteenth. Um, the three, uh, were sent out, uh, from the subcommittee with the rationale for the motion. I'd like to make a motion on, um, starting with the first one and go through all three. And, um, we can have discussion and then hopefully vote and, uh, be done with it.
Uh, the first one was. Mary?
Yes.
Uh, I thought we decided at the meeting that the only one was gonna be the Lewis one, the others could be done administratively.
I'm happy to do that. If we want to, we can go right to that motion.
Does any, did anybody disagree?
Well, yeah, I mean.
That's what we agreed on too.
Yeah, I mean, as long as.
It was not a formal meeting and there are no motions or votes to, to even approve a subcommittee, uh, approval. I'm, I'm happy to move forward with only Karen Lewis's if that's, if we all agree to that today.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that the other two be administratively approved.
Okay, any discussion?
Terrific.
Any discussion, or do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
What, what was the reason for the second? I know the first one was just steps. What was the reason for the second one being administrative?
Uh, Christopher Wante?
Yes.
Yeah, the Inzinga steps were, were obvious. Uh, Christopher Wante at, uh, had the concrete block dock. And because we went out and remeasured everything and he revised his, uh, application to be within specs of the original footprint and location of the current dock. With a reduction, uh, based on what he's buying for, for the aluminum dock of twenty-four square feet, uh, all was within all the standards that we would have approved.
Okay, so he's gonna, he's gonna remove the concrete dock that's there and then he's gonna put a new one in that meets today's codes in the same spot?
Yep. Well within the original footprint, no, uh, length or width expansion. As a matter of fact, it's gonna be a little smaller by inches.
Just letting them know what's going on.
It's, it's not original code. It's, it's not the original code. He's, he's gonna keep it within the footprint. But it's still outside of the original code, correct?
Well, it's in the original code because it's grandfathered.
Okay, gotcha.
But I, I, I think we're, we're probably, yeah, right. It's, it's in the code because it's grandfathered, not because it meets current building codes.
Okay.
Probably, yep, okay. So, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Wait, 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 one question, Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this item was not on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
I thought only the, um.
No, not today's agenda, it's not.
I'm sorry?
Oh.
The agenda that Sean sent out today, you're, you're correct, it's not on today's.
Can't, we, we really can't think about it if it's not on the agenda.
It was on the one that was sent to me.
Well, okay.
Definitely was.
Let's, let's, let's.
We're talking about an administrative hiccup here and we've already had a couple administrative hiccups. Uh, let's stay within spirit of trying to move forward on these permits. And we can clean up the administrative hiccups at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, well, wait a minute, but yes, so Bob, Karen Lewis's is on this, but an administrative approval does not need to be on the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, so yes, so I think, I think we're, I think we're, we're very comfortable.
We're just all agreeing it's administrative approval.
Right, right, so, okay.
And, and we can ratify this in January.
Yep, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any, uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on. Care, Karen, Karen Lewis, where I, hey, we're, we're keeping everybody, we're keeping each other honest.
Okay, uh, this is Karen Lewis, two fourteen Route eighty-seven, lake wall and dock replacement. The motion that LMAC recommends to the Board of Selectmen approval for Karen Lewis at two fourteen Route eighty-seven to replace a lake wall and a dock with a two-foot. It was originally, um, uh, proposed to be four foot feet after the subcommittee looked at it, a two-foot extension of the dock to improve safe mooring of watercraft. That's the motion.
Okay, so the heart, uh, is everybody understanding of, of the hardship here and, and, uh, and questions?
Or are they getting the boat in there? If it's so low?
They're getting the boat in there depending on when our lake is above baseline or below baseline. They are having issues. I would say it's a very shallow cove from my, or our site visit, and I think Jim Santos can speak to that since he lives next door.
It's in my, they're my neighbor and, and our cove is extremely shallow. And they happen to have a lot of rocks over, on their side as well that they didn't, they've never removed. Um, and you know, during, during a, a full lake, they can get in and out, but it's very close, you know? So, so if the water's down at all, there, there is, there is potential that, that the motor can hit and, and it really, and, and they're about the smallest dock in the entire cove, to be honest with you. Because, because it's, uh, such a shallow cove and over the years, people have extended them, you know, well, years ago. But gentlemen that lived there didn't have a, you know, the Lewis's grandfather didn't have a boat for many, many years. So he'd never really extended his dock. So two feet, I think, is reasonable. It'll give him the safety that he needs, um, for not doing any damage. And, uh, and it's not gonna really affect any of, any of us neighbors, so.
If there needs to be a second to this motion, I'll make the, I'll second it.
Oh, yeah, I could, yeah, okay, Henry can do it.
Thank you, Henry.
Yep, thank you, uh, Henry. Uh, okay, so any, uh, any further discussion? Or I, I, I guess Noreen had some, uh, had some questions and, um, but cannot, for whatever reason, uh, um, get, uh, speak, uh, or her audio isn't working, so.
What's your questions?
Well, I, I, I asked her to type the questions, but, um, I'm not, uh, I haven't heard back.
Can't hear you, Bob.
Bob, go ahead, please.
How can you get, uh?
Yep.
Yeah, I was questioning the, uh, the application, if original one was, then it's been revised to two feet.
Bob, you break it.
I couldn't hear any of that.
Oh.
I missed that.
I don't know what happened.
Go again.
Did you do sign language?
I don't know what's happening, must be my audio.
Just try again, we barely hear you, we can hear you, but it's really faint.
Yeah.
Try, try to, uh, turn off your picture. You'll get better voice communication if you turn off your picture.
That's true.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, just questioned the permit application. It originally said four feet and you said it's gonna be.
We have a revise.
Oh, okay, alright, I'm looking at the older one, got it, thank you.
Someplace.
Alright.
I'm going.
Noreen's question just came through.
For, for wetlands, and I have a map, yeah.
Okay.
Can we take it from wetlands?
Noreen's question came through on, uh, in the chat, I think, now.
Okay, so, do we want to address that, the question?
I was questioning when does a grandfather on an original dock end?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It's grandfathered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It all, it only ends if you take it down or, uh, otherwise change it to violate the, uh, the code.
Yep. Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so any, uh, any further? Oh.
We're ready.
No, she's at, well, she's asking, but if the owner changes the dock, then is that not what was just asked of us?
In the regulations, we're allowed to based on a, a need.
Right, a hardship.
Correct.
So, so we're going outside of the guidelines.
Yes.
Now, it's in the guidelines.
Well, okay.
What, what?
In, in, in the guidelines, it does say no dock may extend more than twenty-five feet. I know this is one foot and I know they need this because, to get the boat in there, but, so I'm not objecting to it, I'm just.
No, look at section eight. Section eight has a section that allows this based on, I think it's hardship. I'm trying to get to that right now.
Yeah, Mary, it's, it's, there's a, there's a hardship, you know, these are guidelines. I think it's important for all of us to keep that in mind. And, um, you know, there are, there, there's many precedents for a hardship, uh, to extend the length of a dock based on water level, um, you know, to make it useful. As long as it doesn't become a navigation impediment or, uh, you know, someone saying, oh, well, I want my dock, you know, ten feet wide and fifty feet long, you know? It's, it's not, it's not like that, so I think, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a very, I think this is a very comfortable, um, uh, extension. I mean, it's, it's not asking for a lot and, and clearly it, it helps safe, uh, safe access to, uh, to, to their dock, so.
The other, the other thing, Michael, is that I don't believe this extension goes beyond the extended property lines.
Oh, good point.
Well, it, it likely does, it likely may, but it's already beyond that because of the shape of their property versus the Marans to one side. Uh, and well, Santos, it should, it wouldn't impact Santos.
Okay.
So, yes, so what, what precedes, the safety or the property line issue? And I, I hope our guidelines.
Has the adjacent property owner been notified? Has the adjacent property?
Are the Lewis's on today? I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Karen Lewis is on.
Didn't the adjacent property owner be notified?
Karen, do the Marans know that you want to extend your dock?
He's on, Karen, you're on mute.
Karen, could you unmute, please?
Star six, you can unmute.
Yeah, sorry, it took me a while. Um, we had talked with them about redoing everything. I, I guess maybe, uh, I'd have to be more specific, but they're, um, they do know that we were planning on, um, you know, redoing the wall and, uh, you know, making the dock a little bit longer.
Hmm, right.
I, I thought part of the permit was getting approval from the, the neighbor in writing.
It was just verbal. I spoke to both, um, our two neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, Karen, Karen did, she, she has spoken with, 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 I'm one of the neighbors and, and obviously, well, the other neighbor, but, uh, the other good thing here, just so you know, um, their dock is on the other side of their property. So there's no, there's no way that's gonna affect any, uh, a, 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 any type of boating issue, you know, uh, and because of the rocks in that area, you know, I mean, nobody uses it.
I, I believe that approval's only needed for one neighbor, so Jim, I think if you're okaying that, I, I would think that would cover it.
No. Both names.
I believe the form requires the signatures of, of both adjacent property owners.
Yes. Well, it, it, it is, it is, they must be notified and satisfactory proof. Jim just gave verbal satisfactory proof. Can we amend the motion to say pending satisfactory proof of the Marans?
Aggre- agreed, yes.
That sounds fair.
Let's move forward.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
The motion pending satisfactory approval in writing by the Marans. Karen, can you live with that?
Sure, I'll, I'll, uh, take care of that and, um, contact the Marans.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be as simple as an email from them. I mean, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't realize it had to be in writing though, uh, uh, but is that the case?
Writing, it says satisfactory proof of notification must be attached, so I would presume it means writing.
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't show up in person, yes.
Okay.
And it, it, the writing should say that they reviewed the revised application.
Okay, so yeah, that, that's fine, there's.
Karen, I'll walk you through it tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Mary, sure, okay.
Okay.
We get the most.
Call the question.
Yep, so is, uh, is, is discussion through? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any, any abstentions? Okay, so moved.
We're good to go.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, thank, thank you for working with us. Happy holidays.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks, everybody. Alright, have, have a good day.
Happy holidays, feel better, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, happy holidays.
Are we closing the meeting?
We are closing.
No.
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, don't we have, uh, something else to discuss?
Yes, we do.
Oh.
Well, could, could I, could I, uh, suggest that the subcommittee just did that? We need to get this out to deep Monday. And the writings that Bob and Henry put together for the rationale of grandfathering any boats on the lake are, I think, the third writing are, is better than the first or the second. So if we could just agree that allow the subcommittee to handle the grandfather for an informal review of deep, um, we're, we're really gonna miss, because of the holiday season, our timeline, uh, if we don't move this forward quickly.
I, I would say that we could even go further than that and just, uh, uh, approve it in principle because all we're doing here is, uh, responding to the Board of Selectmen, uh, questions. And what we've done is, it, it ba- basically taken out the, uh, concept that there could be a number of years certain and, uh, put in that it's for, uh, the life of the boat. Basically, as long as it continues to be owned and controlled, uh, and similarly used by the same person. Uh, and it's tightly worded to guard against, uh, uh, abuse. And I'm sure we're gonna have another opportunity to tinker with the language once we get DEP, uh, reviewed. So if, if people could approve the principle, which we've already basically done, uh, this can go to the selectmen and the DEP again.
Okay.
Um, I do have a question. I have a one, one quick question about, uh, a part of this and, um, my question is, it, it says, uh, the boat from last year had to be launched and operated on Columbia Lake during the two thousand and twenty-three prior to November second. Now, there were a lot of boats last year that came in illegally. They weren't, you know, they were put in from the marina, they weren't registered, they weren't inspected. Um, there were, there was some abuse of the gate key. Are, are those boats eliminated from this grandfathering under this?
Cause they were, but they weren't operated in continuous compliance with all applicable state laws and town ordinances.
Right. So if it was launched illegally, would that disqualify, disqualify them?
Right.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay.
Yep.
To the previous ordinances, there, example, over horsepower, we know there were boats that were launched over horsepower. That was to the previous town ordinance, so that would not ever be considered grandfathered. Is that accurate, Henry?
That is correct. The only thing that were really, uh, grandfathering here at this point is the length of a boat.
Correct.
And that some boat that was a quasi-houseboat but not being used as one could continue on because it was, uh, uh, allowed last year and, and thought to be in compliance as long as it stays within that same limited use.
Even though it was launched illegally?
It wasn't, well, it was, uh, it was launched illegally, but it was, uh, uh, then, uh, permissible to have been launched. Uh, so that's a technicality, if that we required them to boat and put it back in, they would have been able to do that.
Well, not really, because the, well, it wasn't an issue as far as the boat length, it was, or, or boat requirements. It was an issue of the gate key being not compliant.
That's correct, but if they pulled the boat out, paid a fine for having made the mistake, I'm, and put it back in, it would have been legal and complying.
Not if he put it back in with the, the, uh, the gate key he put it back in with.
If he put it back, it, well, he put it back in with the people that were there, yes. I mean, it could have been, that was a technicality that could have been cleared up because it was determined that the boat could have been, uh.
No, no, when, when you, when you apply for a boat key, you apply for the boat key for that particular boat. There was no boat key issued for that particular boat. Boat key that was used was for his other boat.
I don't believe a boat key limited to a boat.
It is.
No, it's not, I have, I have a boat.
Wait, wait, when you fill out the application, the application has specific information about the boat you're applying for the gate key for.
Yeah, but some people have multiple boats or jet skis, you don't put.
Doesn't matter, you have to have, uh, uh, that registered with the town and before you put it in the water, it has to be inspected by the town. Even if you have a boat key, the initial, this was brought on last year, that they have to inspect the boat before you put it in the water. So when you pick up your key, that boat needs to be inspected.
I don't think we've been, I don't think we've been enforcing that. The, the whole concept is that you don't have, if you get a key, the boat doesn't need to be inspected. It's, it's a, um, self-inspection for the, um.
Yeah, that's correct, Henry.
Not, not according to last year? Last year, that, that'd be put in effect that the boat needs to be inspected when they put, when they go to pick up their gate key.
Uh, that's not part of our.
That's not, yeah, that's not part of our ordinance or anything. That's somebody saying they wanna change something they can't just, uh, currently.
Not aware of that, yeah.
That may have been an administrative practice.
But you can't, you can't change it without voting on it.
So, so if you have a boat key, uh, you can put in any boat you wanna put in.
The, the reason you're getting a boat key is because you satisfied the intent of the course and you're self-inspecting to make sure there's no invasive species and, and you understand the process.
And, and if you put in an illegal boat, you're still have broken, uh, the requirements and you can be stopped and pulled over. And if you put in a boat without a boat sticker, uh, that's for marine patrol to, but.
I, I don't know, what, why do we keep using the word illegal? If, if you're bringing a boat in and marine patrol isn't around, you're going to launch with your own key. That's the intent of the process.
But, but when you go get it, when you get a key, you have to apply for the key. And you apply for the key for the boat that you're putting in the water.
I think we're getting on, I think we're getting off the topic, guys. Let's, let's, let, I think we're getting off the topic. I think we need to focus on the revision, the section that we're talking about, let's get it approved, so we can move on with the Board of Selectmen and DEP. If you want to continue talking about this key activity and whether it's administrative or regulatory, whatever it is, we can do that at next month's meeting.
Yeah, we can make it in the number.
Uh, uh, agreed, agreed.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with the way the, the ordinance is written. Uh, I'm agreeing with that. I was just asking the question if the boats that were put in illegally last year would be, um, under that grandfather issue, and you're saying yes. Depend, depending on the illeg- illegality.
Well, yeah, yeah, if they were legal, when they went in last year, if they complied to the, you know, uh, regulations or last year, then, then they, they would be grandfathered. Okay, so, what's the motion?
I motion, I make a motion that we approve the third, uh, writing in principle for purposes of resubmitting this to the Board of Selectmen and, uh, the DEP. And that, uh, the writing, the third writing will be circulated to everybody prior to the January meeting.
Okay. You set, you second the motion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so moved, excellent.
I, I will work with Mark and to get a, and Mary to get a, uh, a clean copy of this, uh, so that it can go, uh, into the ordinance and go to, um, the, uh, DEP, uh, uh, early, uh, next week and back to the selectmen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all. Hope you have a great rest.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Second, there we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, have a great day.
Happy holidays again, everybody.
Happy, happy holidays, thank you.
See you all.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.